Get ready on the right, ready on the left, lock and load. Thank you for being here this evening. I was getting ready to say our regular city council meeting, but we're not going to do that first. And y'all have heard about it. This is the most packed crowd we've had to come to a public meeting concerning a pump station. This is fantastic. Glad you guys are interested and appreciate you being here. Actually, in all honesty, we have before our regular called council meeting, we want to do a by law, a public hearing concerning the Indigo Point pump station fee ordinance, which is where we consider a fee for maintaining a pump station in our, in a subdivision development for all lots that are there. So with that, since this is an official thing, I'm gonna read it to you. Good evening. Before we begin our regularly scheduled council meeting tonight, we will first hold a public hearing for the Indigo Point pump station fee ordinance. This public hearing is an opportunity for city council to hear from the public. Any comments on the proposed ordinance that will establish an annual pump station fee on the remaining parcel where the subdivisions pool and clubhouse is located. The fee will be initially set at seventy-three dollars per year and will be assessed annually on the property tax bill. Notice of this public hearing was published in a newspaper of general circulation for our community as required by law. The ordinance being considered tonight at second reading will also reaffirm the pump station fee for all other parcels and Indigo Point that are currently subject to the fee and at the rate stated. At this time, I would like to recognize anyone with us here tonight or online wishing to make a comment during this public hearing. Please step forward to be recognized. One at a time. Is there anyone online? Okay, just for information, Indigo Point is that subdivision that was developed over on Forester Drive when you're heading down toward the railroad crossing at Fisher Elementary School. So that all those houses and townhomes on the left there. That's what's that. Anyone, no one wishing to speak. All right. So we, I don't remember what time I should have announced it. At seven oh five, we had the, we opened the public hearing. Hearing no one interested at seven oh eight, we will close the public hearing. Welcome to our city council meeting, regular scheduled city council meeting on Monday, July the fifteenth, twenty twenty-four at approximately seven oh nine PM. But the records reflect that all members of council are present, along with the mayor, our city attorney, Mr. Evan Bramall. All right. And our city administrator, Ms. Seth Duncan, and the lady who keeps us all straight as best she can, Ms. Cindy Miller. So thank you for that. Fairish department heads, I see you all out there. And we are blessed to have the entire management team of Malden Recreation on the front row. So that is fantastic. Thank you, guys, for being here. Must be something on the agenda with recreation. We'll get to that. All right. I think that's everything that I need to do there. Our, welcome you here. I believe our invocation, our pledge of allegiance would be Mr. Mattany.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite anybody who would like to join me in prayer. Please bow your heads. Gracious Heavenly Father, we are so grateful that you allowed us to be here today. We, we sit here and we think of the events of the past weekend. As the temperatures rise and so did tempers, we ask that you touch everybody's heart, Lord. Bring us all together as one. Help calm the nerves, help us to listen to each other, and maybe not open our mouths quite as much. Help this group today do what's pleasing in your sight to continue working on a city that is pleasing to you, Lord. These things we ask in your name. Amen. Invite anybody who would like to. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mattany. Next item on our agenda is proclamation and presentations, and this is one of the most fun part and privileged part that I have in this job. So I would ask our chair of recreation, Frank. Always want to say, Steenback for somebody. Frank, all good to meet me. That's it, y'all look alike.
Better than what he calls me.
Whereas on Saturday, June the eighth, twenty twenty-four, Malden Recreation's eight U flag football all-star team won the South Carolina Athletic Program State Flag Football Championship in Rock Hill, South Carolina. Whereas Malden's eight U team was led by Coach Joseph Kent and assistant coach Dominique Mosley, and swept the city of Rock Hill, South Carolina without a loss on the day. Now, whereas this is the first time that the Malden Recreation Flag Football Program has won the SCAP State Flag Football Championship, and the first time the program won in all age divisions competing. And whereas Malden's eight U all-star team was comprised of Christopher Bar- Brett, Kristoff Barrett, Logan Blue, Austin Brunt, Joseph Dillard, Joshua Duck, Mason Gant, Caleb Nolan, Andre Lures, Joshua Mosley, James Robinson, Jeff Sellers, Jeff Sellers, and Grayson Sullivan. And whereas Malden's eight U all-star team won the championship through hard work, dedication, and teamwork, and with support of their loving families and friends. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Terry Merritt, Mayor of the city of Malden, along with my fellow council members, who hereby recognize the coaches and players for their outstanding achievements and program success as eight U flag football state champions on this fifteenth day of July, twenty twenty-four. I would ask the coaches, all y'all, Martin, will you all come up here, come up here and get your certificate as I call your names? The coaches will come up.
Can I get Coach Gant? Okay, all right. All right, this is for Dominique, this is for Coach Mosley. All right, so he wasn't able to be here tonight, but was a great help in winning the championship. Kristoff Barrett. Sure. All right, Logan Blue.
Certificate, Logan. Hold on. All right.
Austin Brunt. Austin wasn't able to attend tonight, so we'll save his. All right, we have Joseph Diller. Josiah Duck. All right, I'm a little biased here. My favorite player, Mason Gant. Caleb Nolan. Caleb. Okay, Caleb may not be here. All right, Andre's Lures. So you learn in practice, you don't leave nobody hanging on a handshake, so. All right, Josiah Mosley wasn't able to attend tonight, so we'll keep going. All right, and James Robinson? Yep, there you go. All right, Trip Sellers. Trip was not able to attend tonight. And Grayson Sullivan, who's also wasn't able to attend tonight.
Moving on up. Whereas on Saturday, June the eighth, twenty twenty-four, Malden Recreation's ten U flag football all-star team won the South Carolina Athletic Program's eight flag football championship in Rock Hill, South Carolina. And whereas Malden's ten U team was led by Coach Mark Steenback, I know that name. Not, oh, it's the other one. Okay. And assistant coach Joe Dyer, and swept the city of Rock Hill, South Carolina without a loss on the day. Whereas this is the first time that the Malden Recreation Flag Football Program has won the SCAP State Flag Football Championship, and the first time the program won in all age divisions competing. And whereas Malden's ten U all-star team was comprised of Joel Allen, Jaden Drayer, Christian Earl, Ashton Ganey, Eli Gaskin, Christopher Harper, Cameron Henderson, Brently Latimer, Julian McMorris, Michael Moore, Cooper Steenback, and Camden Taylor. And whereas Malden's ten U all-star team won the championship through hard work, dedication, and teamwork, and with the support of their loving fans and friends. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Terry Merritt, coach of the city of Malden, along with my fellow council members, do hereby recognize the coaches and players for their outstanding achievement and program success as ten U flag football state champions on this fifteenth day of July, twenty twenty-four. All right, Coach Joe, come on up. Old Joel Allen. Come on, Joe. Jay Rock. Christian Earl, I didn't see the Christian make it in. Oh, there he is, there he is. Bird Dog, come on, Bird Dog. Ashton Ganey. Ashton, Ashton's not here? He's extra laps. Eli Gaskin. Christopher Harper, I didn't see him either. Think he was able to make it. Cam Henderson. Come on, Cam. Cam Henderson, come on, bud. They had two Kings. Henderson, there you go. Oh, you remembered. Brently Latimer. Julian McMorris. Tommy. Cooper Steenback. Sometimes my favorite player, sometimes not, right, Coach? Not last but not least, Cam Taylor. Come on, Cam. One more time, guys. This is exciting. When I grew up here, my kids went through Malden Rec, and I am so proud of our recreation program and everything it's council and the staff has done. And this is living proof that we're in great, great hands, great shape, and our kids are coming along and doing their thing. And they didn't participate in the transfer portal, so we kept them. One day you'll be a maverick. All right. Whereas on Saturday, June the eighth, twenty twenty-four, Malden Recreation's twelve U flag football all-star team won the South Carolina Athletic Program State Flag Football Championship in Rock Hill, South Carolina. And whereas Malden's twelve U team was led by Coach Edward Robinson and assistant coach Lee Davis, guess what? They swept the city of Rock Hill, South Carolina without a loss on the day. Good theme, guys, keep it up. Whereas this is the first time that the Malden Recreation Flag Football Program has won the SCAP State Flag Football Championship, and the first time the program won in all age divisions competing. Whereas Malden's twelve U all-star team was comprised of Eli Bradbury, Preston Davis, Elijah Day, Curtis Duckett, Joshua Harris, Michael Moore, Marcus, always get to, Pate, thank you. Somebody don't want to say Pate. Edward Robinson, Don Davis Roja, Bernard Sanders, and Ryland Walton. And whereas Malden's twelve U all-star team won the championship through hard work, dedication, and teamwork, and with the support of their loving families and friends. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Terry Merritt, Mayor of the city of Malden, along with my fellow council members, do hereby recognize the coaches and players for their outstanding achievement and program success as twelve U flag football state champions on this fifteenth day of July, twenty twenty-four.
Coach, Coach Lee. All right, y'all, it was a fun year. I'm really excited we won the championship. Go Malden. All right, so first up, we got Eli Bradbury. Preston Davis. Preston Davis. Eli Day. Curtis Duckett. Josiah Harris. Monty Moore. Marcus Pate. EJ Robinson. JD Rojas. JD Rojas. BJ Sanders. Ryland Walton.
I'm not gonna let them just disappear. This trio right here, and all of us have been around them for a long time. Some of us have known them when they first came on board. Some of us have known him since he played rec ball with my son. So, of course, he was here when the grass started growing, so we all know that, right? So our recreation program, fantastic, their leadership, Bart, Willie, Andre, give them a hand. But before we move forward on our agenda, a little bit of advice, and I know y'all want to stay and learn something. But just in case there's some hungry mouths that you need to leave and feed or whatever, feel free, don't think you have to stay through the ordinary business program of this meeting, so, but I'm gonna turn my back, walk that way, so if you disappear out that door, no hard feelings, do what you gotta do. Thank you. Got someone here from Ripple. Better not to take it personal. All right, one other thing under our presentations, I believe, City Administrator, Mr. Duncan, you have.
Yes, sir. Tonight, we have a presentation by Representative from Ripple Fiber, Ms. Noelle Delali, and she's going to share with us a little bit more about Ripple Fiber and their expansion into the market here in the upstate of South Carolina.
Thank you. Wow, very exciting night to be here. Congratulations to the Rec Center and the teams that took home the championship. It's very exciting. As Seth mentioned, my name is Noelle Delala. I'm the Director of Government Affairs with Ripple Fiber, so we are a smaller fiber internet service provider. We're based out of Charlotte, North Carolina. We operate across several markets in North and South Carolina and South Carolina, we're here in Lexington, as well as Greenville County, Simpsonville. And then we have one proposed area in, as part of our Greenville County build, it's a small HOA that falls within the Malden City limits, however, that is private HOA in our back hall route, doesn't include any city right of ways. That said, we would like to continue talks regarding a master consent agreement with the City of Malden. As we expand in the future, as there's opportunities or cities are growing, there might be potential opportunities for us where we may add service. Our, our business model is not intentionally to overbuild any other providers, and I understand there are several other, you know, here in the market. So right now, we do have just the one private HOA, but in the future, we do look to participate in the BEAD funding program, and so some of those underserved and unserved areas may fall within the city limits here as well. So we do want to go ahead and have the agreement in place, and we have a template that I provided to Mr. Duncan that we're willing to negotiate and kind of have a, have a first reading or go through the process of that, if you will. But if you have any questions for me about Ripple Fiber.
Sorry.
Or about what we're looking to do here in the city.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, so we do provide a full gig service, so we have that as our options. And if we do, you know, expand out further into the city, and hopefully we'll, you know, be able to provide services to some of the community members here, we have a full gig up and down service, and then we also offer the quarter gig service as well. So we have those two options available. But right now, we just, like I said, have that one private HOA that we would like to go ahead and get an agreement on with the City of Malden.
Thank you for being in Malden. We look forward to watching us grow.
Thank you. And we look forward to being part of this amazing community.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the reading and approval of minutes from our City Council meeting of June 17th, 2024. Pleasure of council.
Move to be approved as presented.
That promotion is our second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Steenback. Y'all hold your hands up when you do all three, okay? Good? Any corrections, adjustments, clarifications? Hear none, all is in favor of approval of the minutes as submitted, say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Hear none, the minutes are approved as submitted. We are now at our first item of public comment. Okay, we're gonna hold him to latter part. Next item, report from our City Administrator, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt, Council. Another great evening here in the City of Malden. Have a few updates for everyone. First of all, Momentum 2050 is the statewide plan for the future of South Carolina's transportation network. SCDOT would like your input and invited you to join them in the planning process, not just City Council, but also all of the public as well. There is a survey that has been put out, and I believe we have some of the surveys out distributed in the lobby as well, and it is a, will help with the plan, the 25-year vision plan for South Carolina's transportation systems and the policies and strategies that will guide the state's actions to achieve it. I took this last Friday, it took about 10 minutes, so it's a pretty quick survey, but it's a, it's a nice way to be able to participate and let DOT know a kind of thoughts and ideas and feelings towards different transportation needs and infrastructure improvements over the next 25 years. SCDOT updates this plan every five years to reflect the interest, excuse me, the latest information on travel and growth trends, infrastructure conditions, funding projections, and the latest federal requirements. SCDOT wants to hear from everyone, and we want to, and they want to learn more about the travel preferences to help them better prepare for the future. So that's available. We've also been posting it on our social media, so if you get a moment, take some time and, and fill that out. And the website again is movingsouthcarolinaforward.com. Next, we've seen a lot of business activity recently in the City of Malden, so we're excited to report that. First off, several new businesses have opened at Bridgeway Station, including Roadie by Stella's, Mercado Cafe, and Old Europe Desserts are now all open. Several more businesses will be opening in the near future, and so lots of activities at Bridgeway. Other businesses that recently opened include Eggs Up Grill in the Golden Strip Center, which is near Autozone, and Academy of Aesthetics had a ribbon cutting in June, so we're excited to have them in the city and welcome them. And then you may have seen the news last week that MP Husky recently announced an expansion of their Malden facility. They will be investing $11.1 million in their facility at 1370 Old Stage Road here in Malden. With this expansion, MP Husky expects to hire 35 new positions. We're very excited to see this great company and community partner expand their investment in our community and wish them much success in the years ahead. Two more quick items, and then I'll, I'll get off the stage here. But tickets are on sale now for Malden Theater Company's first show of the 24-25 season, A Chorus Line, which will begin lighting up the stage at the Malden Cultural Center on August 15th. A Chorus Line is a stunning concept musical capturing the spirit and tension of a Broadway ensemble audition. I did not make the cast, sorry about that, but I'll do better in the future.
Forward to the production, then.
Exploying the inner lives and bittersweet ambitions of professional Broadway performers, the show features one powerhouse number after another. Memorable music numbers include What I Did For Love, One, I Can Do That, At The Ballet, The Music and the Mirror, and I Hope I Get It. A brilliant, complex fusion of song, dance, and compelling, authentic drama, A Chorus Line was instantly recognized as a classic. And best of all, A Chorus Line will feature not only a 20-member cast, but a 17-piece orchestra. So get your tickets before they're gone. It's gonna be a great show. And last but not least, I wanted to mention that the renovations over the Clerk of Court's Office are complete. Among the upgrades are a new ADA accessible window and the ability to serve two individuals at once. So great job for that team, both our contractors and Judge Dorados' team, and Public Works for making that, those improvements possible. That's my report, sir.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Duncan? All right, hear none, we'll move on to reports from standing committees, finance and policy. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we have nothing to report at this time.
Sir, Public Safety, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to take a moment to remind everyone that we're back to having our National Night Out 2024 that the Malden Police Department hosts on an annual basis. We're back to having that on the first Tuesday in August, which is August the 6th. We had that one little year, I think it was the last year too, if it was October, which the weather was nice, but we're back to the original date. So I encourage everyone to come out to the Malden Cultural Center Outdoor Amphitheater on August the 6th and join us for this annual event, which will feature food, beverage, music, and a variety of family-friendly activities. Guests will have the opportunity to meet our local law enforcement officers in a casual setting and enjoy fun for the whole family. So there's tons of activities that I think Lieutenant Madden probably has been planning since the end of the event back in October of 2023. So that's all I have for you now, so we're excited about the event as public safety and community involvement continues to be a priority in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Public Wors, Mr. Crayling.
I think at this time.
Thank you, sir. Economic Plan and Development, Mr. Mattney.
No need to rehash everything that Mr. Duncan said, so all I'll say is Malden is open for business.
Thank you, sir. Building goes, Mr. Steenback.
Nothing to report at this time, sir.
Thank you, sir. Last but not least, Recreation, Mr. Auga.
Thank you, Mayor. The Fall Sports Registration, which is tackle football, soccer, baseball, and softball, that registration has been extended to July 21st, so you can go to maldenrecreation.com, go in person at the Malden Sports Center, or of course, over the phone, 864-335-4875.
Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. Miller, first order of business.
We have two ordinances tonight for second reading. The first one is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a tract consisting of approximately 23.2 acres located at Conesty Road and Lakewood Drive by 100% petition method to establish a zoning classification of S1 for that tract.
Thank you. Mr. Mattney.
Yes, Mayor, as previously noted, due to a contractual relationship, a business relationship that I have with the applicant, I must recuse myself from any deliberations, discussions, and votes until the matter is settled.
Thank you, sir. Let the minutes reflect Mr. Mattney's recusal and the fact that he has left the chamber. I believe this is you, Mr. Steenback.
Yes, sir. With that being said, I would like to make a motion on second reading for an ordinance to provide for the annexation of the tract consisting of approximately 23.2 acres located at Conesty Road and Lakewood Drive by 100% petition method and to establish the zoning classification of S1 for the tract.
Steenback, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. King. Any discussion? Is anyone online? Okay, just for more information, as they have requested in pass, this tract of land is down West Butler Road, and right before you get to Conesty Road, starts on your left, and you bear left on the Conesty Road, and all the land that'll be on your left down to Lakewood Drive is part of this 23-acre parcels that goes all the way back. I think that's Lakewood Drive that curls up around and touches Rose Circle, I believe, so that's the land that we are talking about on second reading tonight. Any questions? Hear none, all is in favor of the motion on second reading and the assignment of S1 for said tract, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hear none, the motion carries unanimous, 6-0. Mr. Mattney to rejoin us. Records, minutes reflect that Mr. Mattney has rejoined us in chamber. The next item, Ms. Miller.
Last ordinance for second reading is an ordinance establishing Indigo Point Pump Station Fee.
I believe that is coming from Finance, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance to establish the pump station fee on the final parcel at the Indigo Point subdivision.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Reynolds to establish the Indigo Point Pump Station Fee for all, I think it's all parcels, including this new one, at the price.
Applies to all.
Yeah, the price applies to all of them, that's what I was trying to say. Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Crayling.
His beard's throwing everything off. That's wrong.
Mr. Allgood, Mayor, I heard you, so I was gonna, you three bearded wonders.
Confuse me will be good.
Four, five. All right, I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor of the motion to establish the pump station fee on the additional parcel at Indigo Point subdivision, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hear none, the motion is unanimous, 7-0. I believe the next, nothing on the committee of the whole, then next new business, Ms. Miller.
We have one ordinance for first reading tonight, and that is an ordinance to establish a pump station fee for parcels that have been platted at the Adams Glen subdivision.
Page 32, I believe that is also for Finance, Mr. Reynolds. Thirty-two, I believe that is also for finance. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to make a motion to approve the pump station fee for the platted parcels at Adams Glen. Subdivision.
All right. I have a motion on first reading for ordinance to establish a pump station fee for parcels that have been platted at the Adams Glen subdivision. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. King. No confusion. Any discussion? Here none. All those in favor of the motion to establish on first reading an ordinance for a pump station fee for parcels that have been planted at the Adams Glen subdivision, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries unanimous. Standing committee items, we have none. Uh, committee of the whole items, we have none. We're back to public comment. Mr. Carson, like to say anything? Carson, come on to the microphone. Everybody want to do an introduction for Carson?
I can just introduce myself. I was the intern for the, um, uh, for the municipal court this summer. I just wanted to start by saying a big thank you to the council just for the opportunity. It was a wonderful internship, certainly learned a lot about the judicial process. I hope in the future, over the next couple of summers, that other kids like me will be able to learn these important processes and take advantage of this internship. I really valued my time here, and I hope to maybe continue to come around and visit and hopefully to be able to see all y'all's lovely faces. I just wanted to give a update. I just wanted to say thank you to Donna. She was an amazing mentor. Really taught me a lot about the judicial process and was always finding things for me to engage in and activities to complete. I just also wanted to thank Debbie, Julie, Christian, and Gloria. They're always helpful and uplifting. They're great hard workers. And always pleasant whenever you come into the city hall to see as a first face. Also wanted to thank Mark and Paula for their help in getting me set up with the internship. I also wanted to give a report on what all I was able to accomplish. Besides from scanning and sorting numerous documents, I was able to condense traffic ticket storage dating back to about the eighties, very long time. I was able to organize records, observe traffic court, preliminary hearings, and DV court. And I was also able to watch Donna set bonds and see that process. So to wrap up, I just wanted to say a big thank you to the city. And just want to encourage the program for the future.
Thank you, Carson. Ms. King, would you like to say anything on the half of public safety?
Carson, I would encourage you to not be a stranger. You're a huge asset to the city over the summer, and we're just privileged that you chose us to do your internship. We hope to see you around. Thank you.
I was sad to hear that the traffic citations from the eighties might still be on file. All I'm gonna say about that. Mattney's smiling, so he knows the same story. I got rid of them. All right. Next item before us, oh, council concerns. Any questions, Mr. Mattney?
Thank you, Mayor. These are not concerns, but just comments. I hate that, that our flag football folks left because today is actually a pretty big day. EA Sports launched NCAA twenty five today. And it's a big deal because we have two products from Malden Recreation that are, that are in that game. Cornerback number ten Clemson University, Jaden Lucas. Wide receiver number eight, Jamison Tucker, Coastal Carolina. Both of those guys are in the video game. Matter of fact, I watched Clemson play Carolina before we went to lunch, and it was cool to see Jaden. But for those kids who are playing flag football, playing rec football for Malden, you can be in a video game one day. I just think that's really cool. The only other piece of business that I have, Mayor, is to wish Mr. Allgood happy birthday.
Mr. Allgood.
Actually, it's both of our birthdays. Yeah.
I was gonna wish him a happy birthday, but you took my thing.
Happy birthday, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you.
We learned that, I think, last meeting? Yeah, share the same birthday. But thank you.
Two out of three of the bearded guys on my right have birthdays to celebrate. Got them.
It was a full moon.
All right. Next item is council consideration of executive session for economic development matter. I'll defer that to Mr. Mattney.
Thank you, Mayor. If we enter executive session and consider economic development matters related to City Center Village, Project Anchorage, and Brideway Station under section thirty dash four dash seventy eight two.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Another one of the beers on the right. Reynolds will get the credit for that one. We got that. We'll stay in sync on that one. Any discussion? Here none. All those in favor of moving into an executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. We will consider ourselves heading upstairs for executive session at about seven fifty-five P M. This is a briefing on several projects we've got going on. Around, we should be back, but it could be up to an hour or so. Whatever you'd like to do, you're welcome to do.
All members of council have reconvened in chamber along with our city administrator at approximately 8:46 PM. Mr. Matney, would you like to report out for us please sir?
Thank you mayor coming out of executive session. 8:46 PM no decisions were made, no votes were taken.
Thank you sir. Next item on the agenda is possible action items. I don't believe we have any. What's council's pleasure on adjournment?
So moved.
From that was Mr. Steen back and the clean shaven one on the second of Matney. Those favors say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed like sign here done. We are adjourned at 8:47.